Like the public meeting order at six thirty. Do we have any additions to the agenda? I see none from the select board memo. Do we have any from anybody else? Don't say anything. No, nothing. Okay. Review of minutes January seventeen.
I have a small correction, I think. If I if I understand the dynamics of the fake checks correctly, it's on page three. Under the town treasurer report. It said that Chair Gardner asked if the bank account is still receiving fake checks. I believe it'd be more accurate to say that Chair Gardner asked whether fake checks are still being written against the town's account.
I probably said fake checks. That's just short of.
But. No, it's this question of what the fake checks are, and I'm looking at Gina first. For help on that. I think it's accurate to say that. Chair Gardner asked whether fake checks are still being written against the town's account. Is that correct?
Fake checks are being presented. They are not necessarily being posted against the account.
Right.
So however we want to word that.
It's not that somebody's sending fake checks.
Right.
But they're they're posing as our checks.
To banks.
Right, right. So are still being presented on the town's account, or how would you phrase that?
I mean, they're presented to, I don't want anyone to think that the checks are actually getting cash.
Absolutely.
So.
Fake town checks are still being.
I mean, they're fraudulent checks, so. I mean, they're being presented for payment, yet payment is being declined.
Yep.
And denied.
Still getting presented fraudulent check?
Pardon?
Is still getting presented fraudulent checks? That's basically.
Yeah.
Well. It's not our bank account that's being presented this.
Well, China, they are. Yeah.
They're showing up in account for us to.
Yeah.
Or reject.
Right. Right. I just want to make it clear that they're written on our account. They purport to be written on our account rather than people saying.
They're acknowledging them.
Yes.
Fake account.
Yes.
To present these checks.
Yes, counterfeit town checks are still turning up.
They're not counterfeit town checks.
How would you describe it?
First of all, shouldn't we just represent what the chair actually said instead of what? Your interpretation of what he said is.
Well, I think the chair knew what he was talking about, and this these minutes did not reflect that.
No, that's okay. I can come across as someone that's uneducated and know what we're talking about.
Oh, Seth, stop.
I probably said fake checks.
Well, they were fake checks.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not disagreeing with fake checks.
Right, right, right.
I want to make clear that they were fake checks.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know what you're doing. Right, right, right. It's not like we're getting payment.
Exactly.
We're not getting payment.
Right.
And taking fake checks from people that are making payments.
Right.
We're actually getting presented against our account.
Right.
So. I don't know how you're gonna say that.
Maybe just say what you just said.
But in parentheses.
Asked if the bank account is getting presented fraudulent checks by the bank, actually the bank.
Yeah.
Bank. Is. Receiving fraudulent checks. That are written against the town accounts, but it is.
That are attempting to be written against the town account or something.
Yeah, that works. Yeah.
Good.
All right, say it again for me one more time.
Asked if the bank. Is still getting checks written against fraudulent checks are written against the town account. Yeah.
That are attempting to, well, whatever you said is cool.
Whatever you said was fine. Say it again.
That are attempting to be. Issued against or presented against the town account, something like that.
Use attempted because it is an attempt. They are not successful.
Yeah.
So it'd be the bank.
Yeah, I don't want residents to get concerned that, you know.
I know.
Yeah. We're actually cashing checks against where the town is losing money because we are.
Deirdre, do you have all that?
It's, I'm sorry, it's a little muddled. Chair asked if the bank account is still getting fraudulent checks attempted.
Attempting to be issued or deposited against the town account, something like that.
I mean, not deposits, however.
All right.
And I had.
Yeah. Do you want to read what you have now, Deirdre?
Yeah, thank you. Chair Gardner asked if the bank account is still getting fraudulent checks attempting to be deposited against the town account.
Cash against it. It should be cash.
Cashed.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. It should be cash. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, that's perfect. That's a great sense.
Yeah, yes. A very astute question. I'm glad you read it.
Okay, so is that, wait a minute, Carl, you do have any more? Okay, and then, yeah.
I have two things. One is during the discussion with the cemetery committee to review the fiscal year 2024 budget request. At the end of it, regard, the second paragraph. I think it's it's Mr. Morse, not Ms. Morse. But I don't want to assume, but I think it's Mr. Morse in the last sentence. It's right now, it says Ms. Morse. Unless it was Ms. Morse who said that.
It was. She spoke up at that moment to talk about.
But but I also thought that, did they say that the. Individual may still request granite corner markers if they prefer, but I thought they would have to be responsible for the cost. Was that said, I. I have a recollection of that. Am I wrong? If I am, that's fine. Because it's so much more expensive. That if they wanted it. They would need to pay for it, the granite corners.
That's for me. And I think.
The Ms. Morse said the individual may still request granite corner markers if they prefer. I wasn't clear on who was paying for that. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I thought I thought there was a representation. That the individual would have to pay, but maybe that was my.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, all right.
That's a good question, because in the budget, it did not reflect that cost.
Right.
The budget was way low for the markers. It was a hundred and fifty bucks.
Well, they've been using metal markers, is what it said.
They are now.
Yeah.
But I don't really, okay, I want to talk to them about that, actually.
Okay, all right, well.
Because they're probably in China, and I'm not.
Yeah, so so that's an unknown. That's something we'd want to kind of figure out. But the last one regarding the warrants, and this is crucial. I think it was Ms. Willis, not myself. Who asked about the mushroom shoe purchase.
That is correct.
Me, and I noticed that in the notes. I was just gonna let it go because, you know, it could be anybody. Who knows what a mushroom shoe is?
Correctly attribute that, so.
Nobody knew except maybe Seth, so it's okay.
Okay, so. Is that it?
Yes.
So I have one, just a typo. On the second page, Chair Gardner, at the present board members, it should be Chair Gardner. It's in, under the discussion finalization FY 2024 budget development. It's the paragraph, last paragraph in that. Yeah. Could be the. Anything else? Anybody have any other objections?
I wasn't here.
Yeah, no kidding.
No kidding. Yeah.
No, no, it wasn't.
We kept asking, what would John say?
No, it was the opposite. So if we don't have any more corrections or discussion items on the minute, we probably ought to think about. Definitely most.
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
Oh.
You sound surprised.
No, that's fine, huh? But typically, we get a second, but I don't hear one, so we'll just wait. Oh, if you were to second it. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
And since I wasn't here, it's just a thing.
No, you can go. Yeah. Yeah. The ayes have it. They appear to have it. They do have it. Okay. Sounds good. Public comment. We have some public here? No? Are you public?
One public.
Do you have anything to say? Hi. Public comment, very short. Okay. Right on time. Finalization of FY 2024 budget. So I was wondering if. Gina, we should talk about. It's not to really change our budget. But the ARPA go around that we talked about. That might be able to use on certain items. At one time.
Just to keep the budget down.
Well, it's just because the school has got a huge increase.
Yes.
And the municipal side it does too. So we can use ARPA money for certain items.
Yeah, we have not identified specifically how that will come into play, but the idea that Seth mentioned was. When we spoke last week, whenever it was.
Yeah.
Whenever it was.
Never was.
Um, that. Possibly would something the board like to consider would need to pull back a little bit on what we budget for in capital reserve contribution in fiscal twenty four. With the idea that ARPA funds are available. And could be able to cover. Some costs. We need to identify all of this, but then hopefully we could get that back and kind of bring fiscal twenty four, bring that capital reserve back up. Once we get this all ironed out.
Well, it can be certain things. If you have a shortfall, if you have a shortfall on salaries, for instance.
Correct.
You can you can put, take ARPA money to cover that shortfall.
We have the digitization of land records.
Yeah.
That can be covered, so it's it's. The the ability to use ARPA funds is fairly broad. Michelle and I need to dig into the details and start to specifically identify these items. But the idea was, is there a way to. Make some adjustments to the budget to have, to mitigate some of the increase in the tax rate. With the plan that we could build this whole essentially with ARPA funds.
Reimburse yourself, basically.
Correct, yeah.
So before we go any further on the budget discussion, I have had trouble getting the draft budget off of the website. I'm wondering if our two remote members have been able to access that file.
Say that again, Carl, please.
When you go to the website for today's meeting, have you been able to get the draft budget down successfully?
I was earlier, yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now, so yes.
Okay, it was an intermittent problem for me. Never mind. Thank you.
So, John, you wanted to say something?
I just, from my experience, um. Cutting back on capital, on the capital reserve input's not a really good idea. Because next time you decide, say you take, you cut fifteen thousand out of the input this year. And you're not using ARPA money to make it up, right? You would turn around, if you cut it this year, then next year, if you decide you're gonna put it back in, that's a fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, but.
Where it's not a fifteen thousand dollar increase, if you leave it the same.
No, no, we know that, but.
Well, I just want to make sure of it.
No, no, but it isn't specific to the capital reserve. This concept is on a budget line that we can reimburse ourselves with ARPA money to keep the tax rate. Relatively manageable for this year, just this year, because the school is nine cents or ten cents.
I recommend doing it on line items, not on reserve fund.
No, no, we we want to identify which items we can do.
Right.
But the thing about building the budget right now is it's gonna give us a six cent increase. But if we're gonna do the shortfall, then we're gonna reduce our budget now. So you're going into the budget year. Already building maybe a deficit in there, and then you can reimburse it with the ARPA money.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's.
So you leave it the same, and don't fund it all. You can't fund it all the way. You don't do the total increase in your budget to cover it.
Exactly. And so you you take certain lines that you know you can reimburse yourself with ARPA money. And you and you keep those the same, or do whatever you've got to do to massage it down a little bit. So our tax increase is two or three cents instead of the six cents that we're talking about. Because, you know, they're already, I mean, everybody I run into in East Montpelier is like, oh, my God, did you read the paper? Like, yeah, you know. Blah, blah, blah. They're like nine and a half cents. I mean, they are freaking out. But that. That's 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 not our nine and a half cents. That's the school that we have nothing to do with, no control. We can control the municipal side of it. So just doing that, if we build, you know, a shortfall that we can reimburse ourselves with ARPA money and figure out what that is. And then move forward. So that's why this budget, I'm saying, we should build it a little leaner. On those line items that we can reimburse. And it's a shell game, is basically what it is.
What's tough is we have to finalize this budget tonight.
I know.
Then to all of the ARPA. And identify all the specifics. We just don't have the time to do that, to get into that level of detail.
So we have to do that because it's going in town report.
Yeah.
Going on the ballot.
What's that?
They said it's going on the ballots tomorrow morning.
That budget.
Yeah, I have to find, I have this set up tonight.
Yeah.
So that I can make any changes we want to make, so that I can get both Deb and Rosie everything as quickly as possible tomorrow morning. So for Michelle and I to have time to analyze ARPA.
Yeah.
And analyze it, that's not gonna.
Yeah, that can happen.
Are there any line items that are just so clearly over in the area that this qualifies for ARPA?
Salaries, I'm almost a hundred percent sure.
Big fan of adjusting line items, because that makes it hard to analyze your numbers later. In my experience, when you make an adjustment like this, you make a top side adjustment.
Oh, just go.
We could eliminate.
Just cut it by.
Thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Cash on hand number, and that would then. Basically, John, this is a very good point, right?
So it's basically on the spending side. That you will be able to reimburse yourself after the current forces already left, basically. The money's already left.
If you underfund.
And you're like, oh, boy, oh, for sure, for sure.
When you go back and analyze your budget, you're gonna know that that year was an odd year, and that's why the numbers were artificially.
Well, we already know the salaries are way higher than they have been, just because of what we've had to do in the town office.
But they're gonna continue to be higher.
What's that, Judith?
They're gonna continue to be higher year after year, and we're not going to have this piggy bank to draw from. And there's gonna come a day where we're gonna have to. Raise the, you know, raise the rates to what they actually should be. I think, you know, I I do appreciate that it's a big hit, but it's. It's reflecting what's going on in the world and the economy and to the school. And, you know. If we can reimburse, fine, but I don't feel comfortable making the changes that are being discussed tonight. For a quick turnaround tomorrow morning. To go out to our voters. I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel competent enough in my knowledge of the distribution of the ARPA funds. Whether or how we'll be able to use them as we're anticipating tonight, kind of on the fly using them. I would, my recommendation is we've been working on this budget for, you know, almost two months, if not more. That, you know, the public unfortunately has been or has been notified about what the increase is gonna be. And there's gonna come a time when the increase is gonna happen. It's either gonna be now or three years from now. Our salaries are not going down. They're gonna go up in the future. And, you know, this is what the reality is. So my. My, I'm leaning, if anyone's doing a poll, is not to make any changes in our budget to kind of do a quick and fast switcheroo tonight.
One question that I had that I never did ask you, Seth, is what would be considered a palatable increase?
Well, wait a minute. Let's just talk about this. The reason that I brought this up is the school is going up. About ten cents, or is it around ten cents?
I think it turns out to be about ten cents.
Okay.
It's like, yes.
The reason the school is going up ten cents is, one of the reasons, is a common level of pay. Our common level of basil has dropped. Because properties are selling for way more than they're paid for. What that does is trigger a townwide reappraisal. When our appraisal comes more in line with what properties are sold for, the school gives more, the school gets more money from the state. Okay, so. The increase that they're facing. Might be a one-time increase. I don't know that. But because our CLA is so out of line, and it will come back in line, that may trigger more money from the state, which is, last year. The school rate actually dropped. Several cents. This year is up ten cents. So I'm not saying, all I'm saying is, the school accounts for a large part of the money that we charge our tax rate. Our municipal rate is about a fifth of the whole tax dollar. So if we can massage it down one year in response to the school, and then we can increase it in further years when the school is more in line with where it should be. It'll just help the taxpayer. So right now, we're looking at fifteen, sixteen cents in the tax rate if we go with the six cents and their ten cents. Yes, sir.
So, correct me if I'm wrong.
I shall.
Thank you. But I don't think the CLA and the school is going to affect people's bottom line. In a way that makes us need to do anything to help out on that. Let, and let me put out the argument here. People don't pay a tax rate. People pay taxes. They pay a tax bill. And the tax bill is based on the appraised value of their property and the CLA. And if the state makes an adjustment.
They don't pay taxes on the CLA. That's nothing to do with it. Nothing.
The amount of taxes that you pay on a hundred thousand dollars of property as appraised by the town is affected by the CLA.
Nope. Nope. The CLA affects what the school gets for money from the state.
But the CLA is based on your values of your property and your town.
The CLA is based on what you sell your property.
No, it's what it's raised for. No.
Yeah, praise for versus what it's for.
That's exactly what they're saying.
That's what it is.
So if everybody's house is appraised lower.
Yeah.
Than what the houses are selling for, then they're being taxed at a lower, at a lower level than everybody else would be in the neighboring towns.
Right.
That's why they wanted to be in like in a ninety percent house or you're close, or a hundred percent. So we get to, we get to a new appraisal, and so let me, we get to a new appraisal here, and people's tax rate. Will go down, although things being equal, but the amount of taxes they pay is not gonna go down.
That's right.
So I don't think that we need to take issues with the CLA into consideration. In figuring out how we're gonna distribute taxes over the next.
The CLA affects what the school gets.
Yeah.
That's my perception. Yes, sir.
Two points, thanks.
Yeah.
For doing, the school budget is proposed to, the budget is supposed to go up nine point nine percent.
Yes.
But that transfers to cent, it'll is somewhat less.
Yeah, exactly.
And I. Yes, and and each town is gonna be different.
Yeah.
And so, and I was at the last meeting, they had a chart. Without going on too much here. If you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in Callas, you're gonna pay a different tax rate than a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in East Montpelier because of the CLA.
Yeah, the CLA.
It is, yeah, is affecting. That the actual tax. Bill. That you get.
Even though it's the same school district.
Even though it's the same school district with the same value of home, you're gonna get a different tax bill. Because of the CLA, depending on what town you're in.
Yeah, my perception of the CLA. Is a, is if it's a ratio between what houses sell for.
Yes.
And what is praised for.
Yeah.
When, and the state takes that into account.
Yes.
When it makes payments to the school. That's how it affects your tax rate.
Yeah.
And if your CLA is eighty percent.
Yeah.
They're gonna give you less money.
So in the five towns.
Because you're a rich town.
In the five towns.
Don't need money.
Yeah, the CLA is different in all five of the towns.
Right, because the homes sell with different money.
Because of the difference between the appraised value.
Yes.
And the seller.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. That's how it affects your tax rate.
Yeah.
But not, it doesn't get applied to the two dollars and fifty cents that you're paying as a tax rate. The CLA does not come into that. Comes into the school side of it. Not the municipal side of it.
No, no, not the municipal.
Right.
Oh, not the municipal side at all.
It's all about the school.
The educational tax rate.
Right, and right now, last year. The school got more money from the state, so that dropped the rate where the town had to pay. Because we got more money.
The educational tax rate has gone down every one of the last six years except for one year.
And it's not going down this year.
No.
Right. Because that's what I'm saying, is because of the spike in the school taxes. To keep the municipal rate down as much as we could, because it does affect your tax bill. It does. It affects your tax bill at the end of the day. So if they're going up six cents, and we're going six cents, that's twelve cents on two dollars and sixty seven cents. That's what it is. So I was thinking, if we could keep ours down to three cents, that's gonna help the taxpayer.
And what would ours normally be?
About two cents.
No, what would would it be if we didn't make the cut?
Six cents.
So then you would apply that three, three cents over the next year, or would you spread it out over two years?
Well, if we're three cents now, which is a cent higher than we usually are, next year, we can incrementally raise it. To more realistic level, especially if the school is not gonna go up to nine cents.
But they might continue to go up.
Yeah, and not if our CLA is more in line, is what I'm saying, is we have to have a reappraisal right now. We have to, because it's down to eighty percent. It's down below ninety. We have to have a reappraisal.
I think it's eighty-five is the cutoff. Yeah, it makes sense. Makes sense to me for us to, and this is what we've always done, and I've understood our discussion for the last decade. For us to try to manage our own fiscal house, let the school manage their own fiscal house. And not to make changes to our budget based on what's happening.
But we still set the tax rate at the end of the day. We set the tax rate to gather the money.
We do a computation of the tax rate based on what the school has done and what we have done.
What we need for money. And we set the tax rate. We are responsible for setting the tax rate. To collect, gather the money.
We have to.
To collect some money.
We have no choice in that, other than looking at our budget and looking at the school's budget.
We have nothing, we cannot do anything about the school.
Exactly.
Right. The only thing is. What we can do, we can affect our side, the sixty-something cents. Either sixty-eight cents or sixty-two cents or whatever. They're gonna be at two dollars or whatever.
Now, I think we need to look at our own needs and.
But we are responsible for setting the tax rate. People look to us.
We are not responsible for the school's budget. We're responsible.
We're not, but that's hard to explain to people.
That's, that's true.
Yeah, we spend.
But our job is to explain it.
We still send tax bills. We are responsible.
So a CLA below eighty-five percent.
Okay.
Triggers.
Yeah, well, we're below the eighty-five.
Yeah, we we need to do a reappraisal.
Yeah, I don't know what the percentage is, though.
We've already been, there was a letter that came in, and we have been notified that's.
I mean. I I realize it's late to the game. I didn't realize that we had to have, I know, I mean, I know Deb's got to put the town report together, and this is our budget. However.
So one way to do this would be, we always have a top line number in our budget that is available cash on hand. And what that number is, it's kind of. At least the way I I think, is that's almost what your theoretical, you know, surplus you may carry from when you're.
Is that the fun balance?
Had in the past, huh?
Is that the fun balance is what you're talking about?
Wait a minute, we have taken a fun bounce in a project to the next year, but we've done it many times.
Yeah, so it's, it was a hundred in fiscal twenty-two, it was one fifty in the fiscal twenty-three budget. If we were to raise that to two fifty in the fiscal twenty-four budget. Then the tax rate would. It'd be two point six five cents.
Okay, now wait a minute.
So.
On the fun balance, that, are you talking about? The money that we have taken, that surplus, and put it, built it into our budget? Have we? Have we taken that money? For this this year that we're in right now?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe we have.
No, we did not have a surplus last year. So.
Okay, so we don't have a surplus.
But the fun balance, most of your auditors, you recommend between five percent and ten percent of your budget.
We have.
Of your.
We have a reserve fund that's separate from that.
All right, that's, that's what I call fun balances, is the money you have as your reserve fund. It's not your capital reserve.
Right, no, no, it's a reserve fund.
This is a general fund. This is a general fund.
So it's five, it's gonna be between five and ten percent of your budget.
And we have that already.
Okay.
We have a mutual fund that we established a few years ago, and we put money into that, and that's funded.
I just want to make.
Okay, we're talking about money that's been extra, that we added into our budget from year to year because it was extra money to sit in there. Yeah, it's not in a fun balance.
Right.
And a dedicated fun balance called a reserved contingency, a contingency fund for that.
And it's what you chose to do, it's not something you have to do.
Yeah, but we did that.
Right.
Yeah, we had a lot of money laying around, let's put that in a reserve fund, a contingency fund.
Right.
So we have that money, this is not that pay money, this is money that's usually rolled over from year to year as extra money.
Yeah, and I'm not a hundred percent sure how those transactions occur in the general ledger, I'm still trying to figure out some.
Well, that's what we usually call the fund balance, is what you have left over from year to year and it builds up.
We're using different terms too.
I know.
So that to me could be a catchall, if you would like to make an adjustment, that is where I would propose an adjustment is made. Is in that line.
Use some of that money.
Which would carry it forward, and the idea behind it would be that we will be able to offset some of these costs with ARPA funds. I agree with Judith's point though, that this needs to be done very cautiously, and this is something that VLCT is. Very much on any ARPA presentation I have ever attended, they are cautioning towns against. Adjusting their budget for these ARPA funds because it will end and the money will not be there, so and so you're either gonna. Keep your tax rate flat and have a massive spike in a few years, or. You know, you buffer, and you know, what you and I discussed was, we know that ARPA will be available, we can go look and I just need to. Figure out how all this exactly works and in practicality. We should be able to go and get the land digitization costs that we have incurred, we should be able. To reclassify some of those funds is what my hope is, and now call those ARPA, I want to go find these things that are in our books. That we have spent money on, that we can identify, and then essentially reclassify them to ARPA. I just need, I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
How that exactly works just yet.
But that's fine, I just, in thinking about our timeline to adopt a budget. And how we can, I personally. Think that we should keep our tax rate down. And below the six cents. In the expectations, in the following year, it's not going to be fifteen or sixteen cents. Yes, we can go down to three or four cents. At a, a little less level, not shortfalling ourselves. And using our available funds to do that. I just don't see how people are gonna, I, I'm, I'm feeling the taxpayer here. If they gotta go up six, eight or ten cents, on our side, we should be able to tweak that a little bit.
Just for clarity, Seth, if I may, uh, Michael Dwayne, um, the, I'm looking at the Washington Central here, the uh, the warned. Budget for the school.
Yeah.
Is a, is a, is a nine cent. In rights, right, it's a nine, nine, it's a nine point nine eight budget increase. Resulting, resulting in a nine cent.
Right.
Increase for East Montpelier.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's my thought there.
Yeah, and the CLA is eighty two point nine seven.
Which means we have to have a reappraisal. And I still think that the CLA being low. Is what the state puts his calculations on as far as the contribution comes from the state. But some of us feel that that doesn't matter, the school is its own wheelhouse. I'm saying. As a, as a, as a representative of the town, that um, we are the ones that send the tax bill out and. We, anything we can do to mitigate people's circumstances probably we should do, but anyway.
Judith has her hand raised.
Yeah.
Um, the impact of any reappraisal is going to hit next year. Um, and then, you know, taxpayers are going to be, you know, we're all going to be paying more. Than we're paying this year.
Not, not in the reappraisal, it doesn't make you pay more money.
The tax rate.
Always your tax rate.
Unless you go over, unless you go over fifty percent, if everybody's at fifty percent, the average is fifty percent, anybody that goes over. A fifty percent increase will pay more in taxes. It's all depends on where your property comes in when it's reappraised.
Yeah.
And if the average household only goes up fifty percent, say your property value is worth two hundred thousand. And say, say it goes up to three hundred thousand and everybody goes up fifty percent. Then everybody who goes up fifty percent pays, just pays a lower rate, they pay the same amount of taxes.
Yeah.
But if for some reason your house was undervalued, uh, below everybody else's.
Yeah.
Then, then you go up seventy five percent, then you pay that extra twenty five percent, you don't have to write that all down.
Wait, go ahead, Judith.
But I'm right.
Go ahead, I know.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, but I think there may be a number of older homes who fit in the category that you've just described. That their properties haven't been, you know, reappraised for, you know, a year or, you know, decades. And have benefited from that and are going to get hit. So I, again, I, I, I think that this. During the eleventh hour, we shouldn't be making changes like this. Um, I think that we're going to, I don't think that this year is an outlier, I think that next year. Um, you know, we may have some unforeseen expenses or, you know, inflation's going to continue, I'm, I'm not sure, but. I, and we also don't know whether or how. What we're proposing, you know, is sanctioned by ARPA, and I, I, I don't feel comfortable. Requiring that Gina and Michelle scramble tomorrow morning to try to figure it all out before they submit the budget. So I, you know, I, I appreciate the, the desire to maintain level funding. But that's not the reality of what the economics that we're facing. And maybe we should think about other ways to, you know, what we can do to support our town folks in the town. But I don't think we should be massaging the budget based upon the ARPA funds. Um, when we have some, you know, anticipated. Projects that we know would fit on, would qualify for ARPA um, funds or reimbursement, I'm just. I, I caution our making this change at this late hour and binding us, and I think in a year or two. We're gonna see this spike and we don't, we won't have the piggy bank to fall back on and people be like, well, what happened? So. The one question that I have is, so this is essentially a preliminary calculation of a tax rate, correct? I mean, we're doing our budget, but we are not setting the rate today.
No, we set the rate when we get our.
Cause I, yeah, I did that, I think in like August.
Yeah.
When I count.
Right, and we get our full figures on the, on the, uh, uh, great, on the trade values in the town. And we take all those values, add them up.
Yeah.
And, and put a, put something against the percentage, it comes up with the money that we need.
Yeah.
Right, we haven't said it right, and that's a good point, but the thing is.
So we would cause some initial anxiety potentially among residents, but realistically, before we're actually setting the sex, the tax rate. We should have answers to these questions, we should be able to make adjustments accordingly, I, I don't know how.
Well, that, that was a question that I had in my mind too, is when we do that, I've always thought of that exercise of setting the tax rate. As being strictly a computational exercise.
Yeah.
We, we look at the budget that the voters uh, passed.
Yeah.
We looked at the school budget that the voters passed, we looked at how much money the state is contributing to the school. And all that comes together to amount of revenue needed, we have our grand list, uh, and we figure out the tax rate. So that's, that's how I thought of it, I, I think what you're suggesting, and I don't know if this is the case. That uh, we, we could, we could change the budget at that point.
No, you can't vote, after they vote on it, you can't change the budget.
We can't decide to use, use extra funds.
Or can you add a line into your calculation that is uh, an adjustment? I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, that's.
Well, no, what you could do is just say we're going to set the tax rate at X, Y, Z. You could do that, you don't have to do.
But we could put math behind it to, to get to the X, Y, Z, but.
Okay, you could do the math, leave the budget right where it is.
Of course.
And then you could.
Yeah, the budget can't change, but we could.
Yeah.
Reforecast and calculate a tax rate based on that reforecast or show the delta between the forecast and the budget. That can be a number in the computation that, that Carl was just discussing.
I, I think, you know, I don't know. I don't know, but I thought the same thing, because we're not setting the tax rate tonight. We're putting forth.
Not till June, right, usually?
No, August.
August, August, yeah, yeah.
Thought it was the beginning of one of this.
Yeah.
Depends when you send the tax bill out.
I'd say we'd be in a better position to have this discussion if we take some months to.
Oh, no, I, I realized that more knowledge will come to a better decision, and better, I'm just. Putting forth of a strategy. That could be employed, um, now, the other thing that does happen is the state doesn't, we don't have the final figures from the state. What the contribution is specifically, that's, that's a guessing game. Uh, so I don't know how that's going to work out either, because we get our figures later on from the school, right?
Yeah, your grand list could go up too this year too, because of all the house sales have happened and all.
House sales has nothing to do with it.
But the, those houses should be charged, your taxes are charged. It's a, it's a.
Yeah.
Yes.
On those houses, they will be appraised at a higher number.
No, they're.
I know they don't do it a lot.
It's on sale, you can't do that, the state has to do that. If you, if they, say you have a agreement, okay? And they come and agree the taxes. My understanding is, you can change the, the rate of the land. And you can change certain components of the appraisal, but you can't do it based on sale.
So if you think a house, if the house was appraised for two hundred and fifty thousand and then you sold it for four hundred and fifty thousand. I would think that, just wait a second.
I know.
Don't you think that that would trigger a reappraisal of that house?
Yeah.
And then they would go in and reappraise and say, yeah, this is in fact as well, maybe it's not four hundred and fifty thousand, even though they paid it, maybe it's worth four hundred thousand. You know, that, I, doesn't that trigger, that should trigger a reappraisal?
Common sense would tell you that, but that's not, I believe, how it works.
Oh, nevermind.
It's okay, I know what you're saying.
So keep in mind, we have had some new residences constructed in town.
That always helps a little bit.
Your appraisal will go, uh, your brand list will go up a little bit.
It will, yeah, it generally goes up a little bit. On a percentage basis, it's very small.
Why, you have, you have a three hundred million dollar grand list, four hundred million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's small.
Couple houses, though, don't make much of this.
Anything at all, it goes up a little bit and it helps, but.
Right.
But if, yeah.
I know a little bit about this.
I, I do myself, but that's okay.
I don't understand this one thoroughly, yeah, it's dramatically different from my previous experience with.
I know what you're saying, if the house sells for a lot more money, it could be reappraised and then taxed. But anyway, go ahead, but we're getting.
I was about to ask, Deb, were you about to say something? I was gonna ask if Deb, Deb, maybe have some.
Yes, I, I was just gonna say, um, a lot of what you said is pretty accurate. Um, but one thing you should keep in mind, if you're counting on there being a reappraisal to rejigger everything. That's not going to happen really fast, because well over a hundred towns have been. Ordered to do reappraisals, there's a limited number of reappraisal companies out there to contract with. And they're already scheduling out several years. So we've got to get on somebody's waiting list now. And.
I, I think the, at the VLCT legislative.
Yeah.
Sorry. At the VLCT legislative um, briefing today, I believe the number that was given was. The reappraisal capacity in the state is for like fifteen towns per year.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard sixteen, yeah, and the point is, the point is they're already starting to schedule, you know, like twenty twenty. Seven or something ridiculous. And that's a problem, because that means our CLA will remain low for several years, the only thing that'll help it is if the housing market cools down a little bit. They're always going to take a rolling average of the last three years, so they're going to lop off. Twenty twenty and add twenty twenty three the next time.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty was the first year of the pandemic and that's when it started, so. You know, it could cool off a little bit and then, and the CLA could actually go up, but having dropped below eighty five, we need to do the reappraisal, we need to do a reappraisal anyways, since two thousand nine since we did it. And what I think was John was just saying. There are houses out there. Not a lot of them, but there are houses out there that went for way more than they're appraised for, clearly they've been completely gutted inside and completely. You know, remodeled or something because. You know, and they haven't been looked at since two thousand and nine, because they didn't get a permit. To put something like a garage on, so there was nothing to trigger the listers to go out and look at it.
Well, internal stuff doesn't have to be, you don't have to have a permit unless you're adding bedrooms and things.
Right, so.
So you never know.
There are, there are places that are flying below the radar and, you know, they will go up and it will help overall, but.
They're dead.
As far as whether or not it triggers a reappraisal because it's sold for more than it was praised for, that doesn't trigger, you can't go chasing sales. But if you, if you become aware of the fact that they've done some significant improvements to it, then you can go out and legitimately go and. Reappraise it, of course, you're still using two thousand nine cost tables, you're never going to bring it up to the fair market value for the current market. Unless you're doing a townwide reappraisal, and that's the whole point of it. So we, we can go out and look at that, we can go out and look at that four hundred thousand dollar house that was on the grand list for two hundred and fifty. And we can bring it up to maybe three hundred and twenty five or whatever, but it's still using two thousand nine cost tables. We can increase the quality of the house, we can, you know, register the fact that they've done some improvements, but. We're still working with two thousand nine cost table.
It means you can't say it's worth four fifty because it's sold for four fifty, she's saying you gotta do the table for every single thing on it and come up with a different amount.
I think I heard what she said, thank you. But I'm glad you reiterated it for me.
Well, but part, part of the problem now going forward is we're going to be stuck with a low CLA for several years before we can get it. Trapped up to a hundred.
And we gotta decide what to do about this budget continually. So it sounds like we can't make a readjustment quickly, correct?
Well, we can, with the way I mentioned to you, the adjusting the number that I talked about, that is somewhat of a catchall number. Just keep in mind, we will end with a deficit.
Yes.
In twenty twenty three, so that will likely be a use of ARPA funds.
You'll be chasing your tail.
Calculated at around a hundred, it could be less, I mean, I, I don't know where Guthrie's costs will come in, but we obviously all know that salaries are going to be higher. Fiscal twenty three and benefits than what we're assumed in the original budget, so. You know, we're not in the same situation that the town has been in, in years past, where we're staring at a, a surplus going into the next year, so.
So there's a thought about this, so if, if we present the budget as we have. And everyone passes it, then we're going to assume. That people are going to accept it. It still gives us an opportunity to perhaps change the tax rate when we, when we do it. But if they turn it down. Which could happen, if they say, you know what, we're so sick of taxes, and this looks like a high budget, you turn it down, then we have the option at that point.
True.
Yeah.
Right.
So that way, the route I'm suggesting keeps everyone happy in the room. And kicks a ball down the road, it's putting it to the taxpayers. They have the option to refuse this budget.
For sure.
And if they do, then we have the option to do something different. Right? And we still.
New town meeting.
I don't know how.
Yeah, call a special town meeting.
Yeah, but it'd be called a special town meeting.
Yeah, but, you, you know, that's probably not going to happen. But if it did happen, then we have the option to change the numbers.
Right.
And not only that, we still are talking about setting the tax rate in August and perhaps this will work there, perhaps, perhaps.
I think there's, I think the August approach is a, is a good one, it gives us time.
Yeah.
To understand all of this.
Yeah.
Recalculating the budget, I would argue, the only way you could do that would be to completely re-envision what services this town provides.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
I mean, you could restructure the town office, there are, we could restructure the road crew and we could relay to residents what services would go away. That the town provides, so that, that would be a revised budget in, in my.
In, in my thought, if the town turned it down, then we could perhaps put some ARPA funds in certain line items. And present a budget that might be a little bit more acceptable. That's all I'm saying.
Because you have a true budget shortfall at that point.
Right, because the town turned it down.
Right.
Um, so I just think that's an option, that, I'm not saying it's going to happen, it probably won't. But it could happen, if it did, that gives us an op, it gives us the opportunity to change some numbers. With a little more knowledge. The other option, of course, is the tax rate. When we get to, get to that point, we'll have more knowledge anyway, we'll have more knowledge about the school, and we may have. Um, some thoughts about changing that tax rate. And we'll have more knowledge at that point.
And keep in mind, some of the things I'm mentioning that are a use of ARPA funds, such as the land records idea and things like that. Those aren't ongoing expenses, I'm talking about covering historical expenses that we have already.
One time.
Slowed through the general fund. That we can then recoup and kind of give us a credit back.
Yes, but.
So it doesn't create that issue that VLCT is warning people about, about just covering your costs and covering your. I think it's very risky to say, well, we're going to use it to cover salary costs. Well, unless you're planning a significant reduction in the force in the future, that's, that's a temporary fix.
Yeah, that's all. It's obvious that you're not gonna write that money, and then all of a sudden you don't have the money to spend.
But the things I'm talking about would be real reallocation of costs that the town has incurred, who apply those to ARPA.
Yeah, one-time expenses to kind of re.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Things that we basically just ate because we could.
Yeah.
Now we can use our.
Yeah, so. I think that we need to move on.
I think we need to approve this budget.
Yeah, I mean, much against my better judgment, we're gonna have to.
So I move to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
Alls in favor, please say aye. I'm an abstain. So four ayes and one abstention. Alright. So, that takes care of finalization of twenty twenty-four budgets. Um, finalization of twenty twenty-three town meeting warning.
So the main change, well, one was if the budget at this point, this number now will hold that you see in this, in this morning, um, but Lauren Oates has resigned from the planning commission, so we have added a line here for planning commissioner, two of three-year term. Uh, if the select board would like to try to, you know, we appoint, we may end up appointing because I don't believe we have a candidate running for this particular position um, right now, so the select board's likely gonna end up appointing anyway, so I'm not sure, Rosie. What, you walk me through what we need to do here with, with this position.
Yeah, that's the last one down there, two or three-year term.
Yep.
So, that's not on the, it shouldn't be on, it's not gonna be on the ballot.
This is, by putting it here, it will be, but this is what you are deciding tonight.
Yeah. Yes, Rosie.
So, the way this works, when somebody resigns just before a town meeting or before a ballot, we then either appoint someone to complete until March, until town meeting. And then they run for the remainder of the term. So as far as I'm aware, there's nobody to appoint at this point, but we do need to show on the ballot that we have an open position. It is two years of a three-year term.
Yeah. And somebody should write somebody, somebody then.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, right. So this, if somebody steps forward with a write-in campaign and they get elected, so they would serve out two years before they'd be up for.
That's correct.
I think they get elected, but if they get appointed, it, it's only for one year.
An appointment can only happen if fewer than thirty votes are got, are received by a write-in candidate. So basically, if someone decides to leave a write-in, and they get thirty, thirty votes or more, they're in for the next two years.
Right, I, yeah, they're in for the next two years, but if no one gets voted in by a write-in campaign, then the point that we would make is for one year.
That's correct. If no one. No one wins. You would appoint them for a year and then they would run for the remaining year of the term.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think it would be clearer, I mean, it's, it's unclear to me what this means, planning commissioner to a three-year term. Um, it, maybe if it said two years of a three-year term.
Yeah.
Is, this is standard ballot language, Carl.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to make it more clear to people who are reading it.
Maybe remaining two years of three-year term or something like that?
That would be even clearer.
It should be two years of the remaining three-year term.
Why don't we just say it in French?
How remaining two years? Well, I guess it could be.
Sure.
There are certain ways that it has to be worded. So I'm gonna leave it up to our ballot people at LHS to make that determination, but I'll make, make it clear to them that this is the remainder of a three-year term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we should put it in the way that, that we want it to be, and if somebody objects to it, then, then they can do that.
Well, that could actually nullify the election, Carl. We don't wanna do that.
I thought you said you were gonna check with legal advice tomorrow.
No, I said I'm going to send it to LHS. LHS is the, the ballot printer who has all the guidelines.
So I think what Carl is saying, could we write it in the way that the select board is requesting, and then they can adjust language, but Deb would also, do you know how quickly they would respond? Because Deb would also need to know this as well for printing of the the annual reports.
Well, they're doing two hundred and fifty-plus school ballots, school and town ballots over the next forty-eight hours, so. Uh, the turnaround will be pretty quick, but, yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is the, the language has to be a certain way.
Yeah.
And we, we can't arbitrarily change that language. But I'll let them know that this is how we want it to be said, and if they tell me, no, we can't do that, then no, we can't do that.
Then you just leave it the way it is.
Fine, yeah.
Okay.
Right. So what is it that we?
Remaining two years of three-year term?
We have used the same language for years. There's nothing new about the way this is being expressed, and we haven't had any problems with it in the past.
Well, maybe I'm the only one who's ever looked at it and scratched my head, but.
Rosie.
Yes, sir.
The, does the ballot have to match what the warning says?
Yes. Hmm, it doesn't, it never, it, I'm looking at what the ballot is on page two, or page one, rather. Take last year's report. Um, the ballot's on page three, excuse me. On page three, we said planning commissioner for one of three years. And on the warning, in that same book, on the warning, it says one of three-year term. So it's not identical.
Yeah, not exactly.
The warning should have been changed. Well, again, it's, it's been, it's been sway for years, so it's just, you know, in a rut. But if we wanna change it, I would say match the ballot, make it for one of three years. Yeah, it has to match the ballot.
Okay, good.
It doesn't, it doesn't really match the ballot. The ballot has the names on it. We don't put the names on it, so it's, it's kind of a, a different thing, but it's basically one of three years.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what it says on the ballot, one of, for one of three years. I don't know, I, I don't think it's caused a problem being this way for decades.
I, I, I'm not, doesn't matter to me, but Carl's the one that seems more invested in this discussion.
I, I like.
I think it would be more elegant to say one year of three-year term or something like that, if that's what the problem is, that you want it to be clear, it's one year of a three-year term.
So two years.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at last year's town report, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
So we have our language.
So am I going with two years of three-year term? I'm making this change live because this document I intend to have signed tonight by the select board members here, so I can give this to Rosie tomorrow, so.
We're gonna change it, we may as well make it as clear as we can, so remaining two years of three-year term.
Okay.
As long as that language is gonna pass the powers that be.
Yeah, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't.
I'm gonna ask this question because, so am I capitalizing the R in remaining or keeping that lowercase?
I keep the lowercase.
I was keeping it lowercase, but, so I have remaining two years of three-year term.
Yeah.
Okay, going to the printer right now.
Anything else on this document? Has anyone had a chance to look at, you know?
I just wanna point out that we had said last meeting that we would have a discussion at town meeting about, um, how to respond in the case of increased illnesses or other circumstances uh, using powers granted by the state to, uh, have town meeting entirely by Australian ballot, the way we have, we did last year, for example. And I guess today or Friday, the governor signed the bill that gives towns power to do that through, uh, July of twenty twenty-four, and then, and, you know, do some other things as well. And the legislature is considering a bill now to make more permanent changes with our ability to do that. I think that especially here at the town meeting, as we talked about last time, would be helpful in providing feedback to our three senators and our one elected representative. So my memory, and, um, Mr. Moderator, please help me out, or anybody can help me out with it, but my, my memory is that the way that we have handled such discussions in the past, it's not going to be a, a binding vote to regulation and ordinance or anything, it's just gonna be a discussion to provide guidance, is that it happens under Article sixteen to transact any other business that may possibly come before the meeting, and we don't need to put any saying special about that in the warning. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So we can just say that on the floor?
Yes, yeah, okay. And we, we can say that at the town forum and.
Yeah.
Publicize it, otherwise we can't do it. We don't need to put anything important.
Alright. Okay. This is not binding. Like, if it catches later in the room.
Right.
What are you gonna do, say, if everyone's sick, you wanna tell me? Or?
We'll let the wisdom of the.
Okay, alright, so we're okay with, um, making them open passes? Yes, okay, let's do it. Yeah.
I move to approve the town meeting warning as, as amended.
Second.
Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys, if you have it, they do have it.
So that I've read, um, the town meeting and the town forum, uh, warning, or do we wanna have a separate motion for the town forum?
Oh. We haven't looked at the town forum, okay.
But they're, they're all on the same paper. We sign under both of them at once, so I guess with a, you know, a consensus, uh, I will let the, the motion be considered to have covered the town forum warning as well.
Sounds good. Okay, that's the town forum. Okay.
Rosie has her hand raised.
Yeah, Rosie.
I'd just like to remind everyone who's participating remotely today, who is a board member, that I'll need you to have you come into the office tomorrow to sign, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll be gone.
As long as we have the quorum and we've got three.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right. Well, I'm sorry, but, but we, we'll live. The next item, consideration, uh, oh no, finalization of select board report for twenty twenty-two town report. Okay, so.
So really no changes here. This is just, it would have needed to change if the budget changed.
Right.
At this point, it has not, so.
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve the, the select board report that presented.
Now. There's nothing about the fire department budget in here?
Well, the fire department budget is referenced in the budget impact.
Yeah, that's it. No specific numbers. Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. I don't think we have to have a motion to that. We haven't do this.
I don't think you had a motion for that last year. I think you just say it's okay.
Yeah, fine, great.
Incredible.
It's good.
Thank you.
Um. Oh, consideration of deputy tree warden's position description.
So Paul and Jeff drafted some language so that we can try to recruit a deputy tree warden, and they asked that I present that language to you, and then I will put a post on front porch forum, put a post on the website with this description and encourage a resident or multiple to hopefully come forward and express interest.
Would good.
Um, is this, um, is it clear here that it's unpaid or is paid, um, that was?
Actually, it actually has a thousand dollar, I think it's a thousand dollar stipend.
Stipend.
I think it was a thousand.
Uh, would we wanna include that just because someone might think it's, you know?
Salary?
Yeah, a salaried position or something more than a, a volunteer gig with a stipend attached.
I guess I'll call and ask.
Yeah, stipend available, you're right. First, stipend will be paid.
Or you just say this is an unpaid position and you're expected to volunteer at the lesson.
That's nice.
It is.
Maybe a modest stipend is available or something like that.
That sounds good.
That sound good.
Yeah, I, well, I, I suggested the. I suggested the available first, but then I realized, um, haven't, haven't we forced the, uh, the tree warden to accept the stipend? It's not really this available, it will be paid.
A mild stipend is uh, included in the decision.
Yeah.
Compensation is a mild, is a modest stipend or something like that.
Yeah, you will not be compensated, but you will get a stipend.
You will be compensated with love.
Oh, really? Is that what you wanna say? Okay.
And all the trees you want to hug.
The tree huggers are considered valid. Right? Sorry.
Can I, can I ask a question? Uh, I haven't wrapped my head around this yet, but in the select board report.
Yeah.
I guess this is a question for you, Gina. I didn't, I didn't do the, uh, number crunching myself, but I see that you've got the fire department, where is it now? I can't find it. Uh, fire department cost went up twenty-five point nine K or one point three percent. But on the.
That's, that's an impact of the overall budget. The one point three percent.
On their budget?
No, this is. Okay, so in other words, their budget went up six percent.
It represents a one, one point three percent of the nine point eight. Correct.
Okay.
I know, it's kinda hard to present those because you're trying to.
All the changes result in.
Well, that's the taxing.
Well, I'm, I'm showing the six percent increase on the fire department page, so you can see how much it actually went up in terms of that individual budget and the ambulance. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Also, so you're saying the twenty-five point nine for, uh, thousand, or yeah, twenty-five point nine thousand is what percentage of their budget?
No, it's quite a bit more than, yeah. You would see those details in our, in the detailed budget, that what their particular line went.
Oh, yeah, I know.
But it's also on the fire department page where I put the budget for the fire department and the ambulance. The fire department went up six percent, the ambulance six point four percent.
I think it's misleading to say one point three percent.
I mean, it's tough. I mean, here I'm trying to explain the total impact to the overall town budget, not each individual line item.
Each public to top twenty-five point nine, or it should be six point seven percent.
Well, presumably this applies to all the parentheticals in that.
Yeah.
The one point three.
The, the two point three, the four point eight, and the one point three.
Trying to kind of explain is what's, where that nine point eight is coming from. That's what this is trying to explain, not each line item, what its increases.
Yeah.
Comma, accounting for two point three percent of the increase, and then the next two, you could just have the number and then a semicolon in the percentage. That be clear?
I'm flexible.
Go for it.
No, I, I, I think it's right the way you, because.
Yeah, I like the way it is.
I think it's fine, yeah, because you're just, it's a cumulative thing. You're, you know.
Yeah, we're talking about the total budget here, not identifying.
Just that one thing, so that, I think it's fine.
Yeah, or, or maybe even a last line, you know, the aggregate or the sum of all these changes results in an eight point six percent tax increase or five point eight cents.
That's.
It's fine the way she did.
This is a general fund has increased nine point eight percent primarily due to the following thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
It's good. Very good.
Okay, so going back to what we're on, oh, deputy tree warden, we'll go with that.
I think so, yes, I will add language about that there, that a stipend compensates, I'll figure out what to say.
Yeah, something, you know, appropriate.
Come to the stipend.
Come to a modest stipend.
Modest stipend to be paid.
Someplace where towns don't give stipends, that would be more than a lot.
Yeah. But can measure it with hours sometimes.
Yes.
So, okay. You know, are we done with that item, the deputy tree warden?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so this is, I, I. Back to the next one?
I am, and, uh, it's like you might, the next segment has a town meeting component to it, so you know, I'll sit around for it, sit around for it.
The next item is discussion on town management and light of COVID nineteen.
And we, uh, discussed in previous, a previous meeting, saying something somewhere, uh, requesting people to wear masks to town meetings, and, uh, and we talked about the sort of language we use, and based on that discussion, I gra, I don't know, somebody, someone also drafted some language for that, but I, I put together some language for that, that I'd like to run by you. And that is, um, all who attend town meeting are requested to wear high-quality masks, N ninety-five or similar. We want everyone in our community to feel safe attending town meeting, and many people are immunocompromised, live with someone who is immunocompromised, or would otherwise benefit from white bread Matthews in a crowded indoor space. We said we wanted a recommendation and we wanted to emphasize that this was being done to include more people in it. Does that satisfy the will of the select board?
I don't like.
Yeah, I don't like, I, I thought we talked about this last week, maybe encouraged or, you know, encouraged.
Request is the word.
Yeah, I don't like request.
That's your, yeah.
And I don't know if I would specify N ninety-five, actually.
Yeah.
I know that that's the most advantageous, but I don't know if I would specify that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know.
Not specified. Just an example, it says, hi, let me read it again. All who attend are requested to wear high-quality mask comma N ninety-five or similar.
No.
Okay, give me something more, please.
More.
More than no.
I would just.
Judith. Which which one? Go ahead.
Well, what I would I would just leave, I would just say mask is definitely encour- you know, I think the rest of the language, I would not specify the kind of mask at all. That's my suggestion.
Mask usage encouraged.
Yes, that's exactly what I would say. Period. That's it. Yep.
And we also said we'd be providing masks. Yeah.
We can do that, sure.
Rosie, you have your hand up?
I do. Um, I wanted to um kind of remind you of how we handled the mask situation throughout the pandemic. We are not permitted to require the wearing of masks. It's out. It's against the law. So but we are absolutely permitted to, as we did during elections, put up a sign that says numbers are up, please wear your mask and have those masks available at the door. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that will comply with what you're actually requesting, or if we need to actually say more. I'm happy to put notices in front porch forum making the request or the suggestion that because we are doing in-person town meeting and that COVID is still around, that masks will be available for all who wish to wear them and that they're they're suggested. I guess I want to make sure that nobody thinks that they can't vote because they're not wearing a mask.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Judith?
Yeah, no, I I would concur with Amy's recommendation. I like the term encouraged um and, you know, indicate masks will be available. Um, so we're encouraging people to wear masks and we're making them available.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yes, sir. If I may, I like uh masks are encouraged.
Yeah.
It has a certain.
Yes, it has a nice ring to it.
It's a nice ring.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is is there an appropriate place in the town report for this in conjunction with the town meeting warning or anywhere else, or should we just use front porch forum and town forum to spread the word and signs at the actual site?
Hey, Carl. Um, there are a couple of sections that are specifically about how to vote.
Okay.
And that include warnings like, you know, read your certificate envelope and that you have to request certain ballots this year. Maybe that would be a good place to encourage people to wear their masks.
So in the town report on how to the section on how to vote, okay?
Deb, does that work for you? I can get your language tomorrow morning.
Yes, on page thirteen you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so.
Page thirteen, I just will say, is facing the signature page of the warning, so it's the perfect place for it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will email the language to Rosie and Deb. Then, okay. Very good. So it begins masks are encouraged and they will be available. And the rest of that has read before. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, is that are you done with the COVID nineteen seven?
That's that's my input. The town administrator had some input in the report.
Well, I mean, I'm presenting the numbers were low. I I'm not a hundred percent know how much these numbers tell us these days, but this is what the CDC is reporting.
Right.
Okay. John, you have anything to say? Anybody?
Nope.
No. Okay. Uh, once we have once to sign. They're right here. They'll.
It's not long.
No, it doesn't feel long. It feels like it feels like two days.
Um, how often do we pay the for the website? Um, it's like five hundred something bucks?
It's I think it's like quarterly.
Um, and what do they do for us?
They host the website for us.
Okay.
So they run, we get regular updates of the WordPress site. Um, and then also if we have an issue or a question, they're there to answer that.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything um on your report you want to?
Well, we already discussed about Lauren Oats' position.
Yeah.
Um. I believe that the trash service that used to occur in the town office parking lot will no longer be happening, so I don't know if the select board has any thoughts on that, but I just wanted to let you all know that.
Yeah, um, so we don't really have uh concrete information on that, but what I was gonna do is if the people that were doing it were assuming that they're gonna start it up, um, I think we need to address it at that point.
There, did we read this paper, right? What the what happened?
Yeah, yeah, but but the 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 principal is no longer involved in trash service, but there are relatives that are running a trash service in Plainfield. It hasn't run here for a couple of weeks. We're not really sure what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So I'm saying that if they are coming to an assumption that they were just gonna continue, we could address it at that point. At this point, we'll just.
Yeah, we have not received any calls
Yeah.
of any residents
Yeah.
concerned or or missing the service, so it's I know two weeks ago there was a sign in the parking lot that we're directing people to go to Plainfield. That sign was not there this past week.
Yeah.
Um.
So maybe this happened.
Yeah.
Can I would just can I just say something about that? Um, I talked to the cleaning lady who was in the office this weekend when I was working on the town report. And she is used to getting rid of all the stuff that's being purged out of the drawers and filling up garbage pails by giving them to that guy and getting rid of it for free. And now she's going to have to, she has been assuming the cost herself. And she just considers that it's her contract, so she's swallowing it. But if this is gonna be a permanent thing that may affect her contract rate, because she didn't expect to be paying for the trash disposal like that.
Yeah, Rosie actually spoke to her on Sunday, and um I was gonna get with Rosie and actually Denise is is helping us out right now, but see if Denise could call her because she should she should be able to adjust her
Yeah.
her rate uh to, I mean, we should be paying those costs, so.
Yeah. Oh, good. Anything else?
Um, I wanted to let everyone know that uh Titan, oh, not for away.
No, no.
Oh.
It's a side comment.
Oh, um, that Tyson, uh, the zoning administrator will be out of the office the weeks of February twentieth and twenty-seventh. Um, he's available if something comes up and he needs to come in, uh, but he will not be holding his regular office hours. Um, so just to let the select board know that.
Yep.
And then I think everyone is aware of our future meeting schedule. February will be slightly different um with February thirteenth and twenty-seventh. And then, of course, we get into the town meeting schedule in March.
It'll be so sweet to be with you all on Valentine's Day Eve.
Oh, there you go. But it's not Valentine's Day, it's Eve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very nice.
What what about the um the town, the request about uh the camp?
Um, I'm targeting February twenty-seventh for that.
Okay. All right. Did you, were you gonna say something? I'm sorry to break you off. Or maybe that was the.
Yeah, I was just, um, the sixth, which I guess is next Monday, I may or may not be able to appear remotely. I'll be traveling. I'm not sure if I'll be back yet, so I may or may not, if um if I appear, it'll be remotely, but I may be unavailable, not near any place where I can access. You mean the thirteen? The the six, we moved the dates to the thirteenth, twenty-seven? All right, I'll see you on the thirteenth.
We did it just for you.
We did it for you.
Thank you. All right. Sorry.
You do know. You sent a request to the site board. Do you remember that?
Okay, thanks. Good thing you remembered.
Yeah. Okay. Um, anything else to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did you get the warrants, John?
Oh, you already.
Oh, yeah.
Did you saw it, right, Carl?
Yes.
Was there anything else? No other business?
Not much we want to hear. It's the only other business.
Make sure we have no other business before we adjourn.
We could adjourn earlier. Well, we can still discuss it. I make a motion that we adjourn uh tonight's meeting uh January thirty, two thousand twenty-three, as like as a East Palm Beach slide work.
So?
Second.
We have second. I'll respectfully say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, good enough that you have.